Good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, March 6th. This is our organizational meeting post-town meeting. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. First order of business is I will take nominations for a chair.
May I nominate Eric Remick?
Second it.
Are we sure?
Any other nominations?
Okay, I got you.
Sure, I don't wanna be.
Yeah, me too.
Any further discussion, any other nominations? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, okay.
Congratulations.
We're chairing it again.
Thank you all.
You can take the reins from here.
Thank you. And thanks to everybody for what I thought was a good town meeting. It felt like we had good discussions, people were civil and raised, really raised important questions, and it was good discussion on a lot of things.
Seemed like a good turnout, too.
A good turnout.
Yeah, seemed like a pretty good turnout.
Hundred and seventy-five-ish?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was on the order of 200, a little under, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was...
Yeah, more than half of the voters. People that cast a vote.
Right.
Oh, right, people that cast a vote, right? Registered voters is 2,000, maybe?
No, closer to 1,000.
Thousand, two-hundred, maybe?
Oh, is it closer to 1,000?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, anyway, I digress. Do, do, to do, do, oh, we need to elect a vice chair. Any nominations?
I nominate Kaylee for vice chair.
Other nominations? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Is everybody?
Approval of minutes from the last regular board meeting, which was February 20th, and we have minutes from the informational meeting that was immediately before that, also on February 20th.
Motion to approve both?
Second.
Any comments on the minutes? Thought they looked good. All in favor of approving the minutes as written for both meetings, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Next, set a just agenda, we'd like the agenda as written. So we're gonna roll along, communication with the audience, the audience is a little light on the ground tonight.
Well, they've had a busy week.
They have, that's really, yes, people have done their duty participating this week.
We'll give them the night off this week.
Next, we have a bunch of appointments. So, these are things that we appoint, that the board appoints every year.
We're gonna do each one?
I'd like to fill in some of the blanks, and then we could just discuss and fill in some of the blanks, and then...
Yeah, and then do it as a slate. So, do we have anybody who wants to be Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District rep?
So, I did wanna mention that I think I was the alternate last year.
You were the alternate, yeah.
Um, I can't commit to being the representative, but I'm happy to continue to be the alternate.
Okay, that sounds good.
So, Kaylee is the alternate.
Their meeting is the first Wednesday of the month, 6:30, usually on Zoom.
Why do we, I thought we had an agent to convey real estate.
It was you, but I left a blank because I didn't know if we're gonna continue with that.
That's why I thought we had one.
Yes.
Yes, 'cause I did have...
And then I couldn't make a closing, remember, during the week, 'cause I closed it a day.
Yeah.
So, that's why it's kinda there, so...
It doesn't happen very often, so I can do that.
Okay, so we can fill that in.
I missed two.
We don't have an alternate for the NEK Communications Union District, that's...
What exactly is that?
Um, so that is the NEK Broadband Board. Did you see my email that I sent you on that?
I thought Paul resigned or something for the...
Yeah, I did, I hope so.
Yeah, he's still on it?
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
Um, and he gave me a couple suggestions, I did reach out to Miles from HEB, he's not able to commit, and I actually asked him, he wanted to.
I don't know if I saw that.
So...
Tim, second year man, it's time to speak.
You guys, you guys.
You got three years, bud. Where, hey, I'll make you get a pick one.
Pick one.
Solid Waste, her problem.
I know, when I was in the three-year seat, I took on a lot of tasks.
Okay, so...
Like a senior seat.
The board meetings are one and a half hours every other month, with two in-person meetings, usually in Danville.
And Paul has been pretty into it, so as the...
And it said, he just said I'd appreciate it if the alternate attended all board meetings, which is one and a half hours every other month, with two in-person meetings, usually at our Danville office. At the low end, it could be attending the ones I can't make, which might be one or two a year.
Yeah, we're waiting for Paul.
So, don't know.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
Do you have an interest in rural broadband?
I have Starlink.
Perfect, 'cause that's, you know what, that's the kinda thing that they need to hear.
I mean, it's the competitor.
Well, I know, but that's, they need to hear that.
Fiber will be faster.
They need to have that view, that, you know, they have to understand it, let's go, let's do it, make it happen.
The only other question I have is, um, I understand that Bill Chidsey maybe is living in Greensboro now, does the energy coordinator have to be a Hardwick resident?
Greensboro, I mean, you know, you don't like the Greensboro...
I don't know.
I guess he was at the Greensboro Town Meeting, and like, said that he registered to vote there, so I'm like, I just didn't know, and I mean, I don't have confirmation of that, but, and I haven't been able to connect with him, but does our home energy coordinator have to be a resident, or not?
I don't know that...
I don't know, we need a hardwood energy coordinator, to be honest with you, as far as I'm concerned, but, but, you know...
Well...
Why did we make that up?
It was Andy, because, um...
It's been a long-term thing.
Starting by Nancy Nodderman.
It was Nancy Nodderman for many years, yeah.
For what?
The main goal...
The energy coordinator.
The main goal is helping with the energy, well, at least what Bill was doing.
Right, but what I kinda understand is why we needed to have positions, but I understand what, right? I understand it's...
Well, they, they chair the committee.
Well, right now, there's nobody on the committee.
Just Emily Hershberger.
Was there anyone else on it?
I thought so.
Emily Hershberger, Selma, and...
Oh, yeah.
Hey, I think we should, uh, we should hear from that people and make sure they're a viable organization before we worry about it.
Worrying about it, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Are they still meeting, yeah, or have they, has a problem?
Maybe, I mean, I'm not against it, but if it's...
My feeling is we should, um, we should appoint Bill until we hear that he's not doing it.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. But I mean, we struggle with, you know, commissions, all the other boards and stuff, and people, so...
Yeah, but...
To burn off a volunteer or a candidate or something that isn't really, not, it's like the conveyor, whatever, whatever, whatever.
So, the only one we're missing is Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District rep.
Oh, I did that, I've done that before.
Can you tell me more about that?
Sherry Ken, she's been telling us every meeting, I feel like.
The Solid Waste District is a, is a municipality of its own. They're building a new facility for the alternative recycling and hazardous materials. It's in, it's gonna be in Berlin, or Barry, Barry, Berlin, over there. Do you have an interest in recycling, or?
No, not in that regard, I didn't know if that was...
Or trash.
Or trash.
I didn't know.
So, I was, I did it before Sherry, so, and neighbors talking about building this thing down.
So, they're, they're doing it this year?
So, the stuff doesn't grow very fast, it's a bad situation, because solid waste traditionally has been funded through tipping fees at scales, and recycling works against that. So, and recycling doesn't pay for itself, so there's a revenue problem in this recycling stream. That's where I got frustrated, because it was, it's just, there's gotta be a different, it's, in my opinion, there had to be a different way of trying to fund what we were trying to do, so I lost interest in it, so I don't want...
But they work hard to do outreach and educate people, and they've worked hard to get the bag, the single-use plastic bag thing, um, done, which is done, and, um...
It's always amazing to me...
The hazardous waste thing is a big deal.
It's amazing to me that with all the effort and the concern in the town of Hardwick, by all the people, about all the things, clean energy and composting and everything like that, that we can't get someone motivated to be in this position.
Talk is cheap, Danny.
That's where we get our green update grant funds from.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is the town of Hardwick wants to give out the perception that we're really on board with this, but no one ever, for years now, we cannot find one single person.
Well, I think Sherry's talked about this for a long time, is we don't, I mean, the way that we advertise these, a lot of people don't even know that, what that...
Well, Sherry's...
No, I mean, Sherry's...
Sherry's been, she's pretty...
No, I know, but they, like...
They also, you know, there's, they have some grant funds that they give out for municipal, um, projects that are related to...
And we've used them.
Recycling and composting.
But there's people that are in...
The fact that I was an active member on that, um, on that board, I think helped us when we had a bunch of dirty dirt over here at the Yellow Barn Project, I think I, maybe, we were able to save about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars getting rid of that dirt.
Because they originally had a really high, high fee, and a per yard fee that was huge.
And it was just a conversation that needed to be had about how much they were gonna charge us to do that, to get rid of that dirt.
It went from like thirty bucks to seven fifty or something, I don't remember, it was a big drop.
It was over, yeah, it was easily...
So, it's important, but...
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
But we have this slate of people to, appointments to make, and we don't have anybody that we know that wants to take that role, so I say we proceed without that for now, while we find somebody.
Okay, I agree.
So, then in...
And the alternate can fill in until then.
Thanks, Danny.
As time allows, yes, that's exactly what the alternate does. Alright, so I'm gonna read this slate.
Oh, no, I, I'm gonna hang up, yeah.
So, David Upson Jr., Civil Defense Emergency Management Coordinator, Bill Chidsey, Town Energy Coordinator. We have a opening for the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District rep. Kaylee's gonna be our alternate for that. Larry Hamel is the Town Service Officer, Eric Remick as Agent to Convey Real Estate, Sherry Cornish as Board Rep to sign warrants, Sherry Cornish as Neck Arts Board Rep, Paul Fix as NEK Communication Union District Rep. Tim is the, will be the NEK Communication Union District Alternate Rep. Eric as the Hardwick Trails Committee Rep, Danny as the Hardwick Woodbury Trail Rep, David Upson Jr. is a Town Safety Officer. Maya McCoy is our Town Website Coordinator, Kristen Leyte, the Town Rep for NVDA. Eric as the Town Health Officer, actually, that's appointed separately, but that's okay, we'll leave it in there.
Well, I have a note that is...
State Department Health.
Right.
And then with David Upson Jr. is our Deputy Health Officer, thank goodness. And Sherry as the Hardwick Downtown Partnership Board Rep, so that's the slate.
I motion to make the appointments as read.
Second.
Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, good, motion carries, next is the establish a calendar for the coming year, which is essentially the same, first and third, Thursday, 6:00 PM, date of July, fourth week off, and we have an issue on first Thursday of January is New Year's Day, I think, right?
Yep, so...
So, push it out a week.
There's two things, um, in July, we're gonna do one meeting, but it's gonna be on the second Thursday, instead of the fir, instead of the third.
Oh, that's mixing it up.
Yeah, only because we have some conflicts with time off and meeting coverage during that month, so... Yeah, the 17th isn't gonna work, so...
How do you know that already? Anyway, yeah, good.
So...
So, what do people think about this?
She knows that already, 'cause she's gonna be gone.
I'll be in Indiana, so...
Alright, I guess...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's enough notice, I guess.
So, yeah, we're just looking at, so kinda in the middle of the month that way, we'll have meeting coverage in July, so, July 10th, and then because of the holiday, we'll do the second and fourth that month, and this will be posted on the website and everything.
Are people okay with that, I know...
Email it to us.
You don't wanna meet on New Year's Day?
No, are people okay with the calendar?
Or is it in here?
Yeah, yeah, no, New Year's Day is alright with me, I don't care.
So, we're gonna meet the second and the fourth of January? It was second and third, yeah, second and the fourth.
Second and fourth.
Yeah.
Cause there's five Thursdays in January.
You don't need to email it, I didn't realize it was right here.
Yep.
Perfect.
Alright, is that gonna work?
Motion to approve the subwork meeting schedule and calendar for 2025?
Second.
Yeah, we're gonna start at 6:00 PM, like always.
She said to the side.
I'd be tried.
Would you prefer another?
I, I've given up on hoping for something different.
What is your hope?
It's okay, I just, yeah, I just have to leave my business before it's closed.
So, you wanna do it later?
But nobody does, so it's okay.
Thank you, Sherry.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, because I basically don't really have time to go home in between, like, thirty minutes away, and so I just come and stay.
I was the only person beside you who just wanted to be over there this year, 'cause...
Alright, so all in favor of approving the calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, next, Business Manager Casey Rattle to discuss an opportunity for 0% borrowing from the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank to bring lift stations up to code and standards, and increase capacity for the future.
Okay.
Hi, Kristen.
So, there's a copy of the commitment offer in here, um, so, as I said, so, the bond bank has a program, it's SCRP, Small System Capacity and Vilityancy Program. Um, this would do two things, one, it would bring our lift stations up to codes and standards, because they flooded twice, and it would also allow us to increase capacity for the future. And the piece here that's important is that, um, so, about 700,000 of the 1.7 million is like the repairs for FEMA, where we would get 75% reimbursement for it. The other million is the increased capacity, of which they've come and said that they could get us a million dollars of forgiveness for that million, um, through DEC. So, we're kinda killing two birds with one stone, the increased capacity and the repairs. Um, this is 0% interest, draw it as we need it. Um, it's a grant anticipation note, because you'd have the 1 million of forgiveness, and then the 700,000 is paid back 75% by FEMA funds. Um, and then, um, the town's portion would be 25% of 700,000.
Which we need to do anyway, is that...
Come from sewer capital.
Right, and we need to do that anyway, because that's repairs from the FEMA, from plus, so, that's not...
And it's, I mean, maybe we could get more than 75%, um, but we would wanna count on that.
Right, right, but that's not an op, that's not an optional thing, that's gonna happen regardless.
We need to do the repairs and bring it up to code and standards.
We're talking about redoing our whole system in any way?
Well, this is kind of a separate piece, it's a part of it, but it's separate, really.
Lift stations are basically pumps, like, there's one down by the storage shed that pumps the sewer, the day from Magdalen. So, that's like a different pump.
Aren't there two down there?
There's one there, and the other, there's two of them, where's the other one, the other one?
I thought there were both down there.
Oh, yeah, there's one over out by the end, too.
But I'm just wondering, would that include, if we, when we redo the system?
It would not be affected, now, that, what, we talked about that, that's all down...
This is the collection system versus the water plan.
Yeah.
And part of the design of it is we, um, in talking with Aldridge and Elliot, is that we would design these lift stations so that they could go along with any repairs to the sewer plant, yes.
And so, when you're talking about, um, creating opportunity for increased capacity, or future, what, what are we talking about there, are we talking about just like bigger pumps? Or are we talking about extending sewer lines?
No, bigger pumps, we're talking about the lift station.
So, just, this is all the lift stations?
Yes, it's only lift stations.
Got it.
Do we know which ones that, uh, this would be applicable for, like, are there lift stations?
We just have two, we said two.
So, it's just for the two?
It's just those two sewer lift stations, yes.
So, this is really all, okay, so just to clarify, so it's a, it's a bond in anticipation of grants, which would mean that we don't need a townwide vote on it?
Correct.
And even though por, portion, portion of it, oh, no, 'cause we're gonna repay that portion from the sewer capital.
All this is doing is allowing us to do these things.
Yes, and so, it says right in here, it's basically like, um, the intent of the program is to provide up to three years of cost-free capital, with principal repaid with proceeds from FEMA and the state of Vermont. So, it allows us to do this, and so, the idea would be that...
Cause it's basically reimbursement, but we don't have any money to spend.
25% of 700,000 is sort of worst case for us. And then the FEMA reimbursement has to pay down the loan, and then, um, they have, you know, it's subject to DEC approval, but that we could get 1 million dollars of forgiveness on the total.
And do we, do we know, would this cover everything that needs to be done for those two?
Yes, we had gotten a preliminary estimate from Aldridge and Elliot, um, for the costs to basically redo those both. And that was the 1.7.
Okay.
That was the 1.7, like, but the repairs themselves was 700,000, and then 1 million for, to really do that, so the capacity is there as well.
Right, because it'll be 5 million if we have to go back in in three years, because somebody wants to build something down, I mean, Jeff Perry wants to put in something that needs, you know, or beyond that, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
So, no, no interest payments, nothing, um, and then, we don't have to like take it until we're ready to start doing the work and drawing on it then, um, but yeah.
Super friendly terms.
Yeah.
So, um, and, and this is really, I'm just thinking about, um, so we're really dealing with the, um, the wastewater fund, like the, like it's its own enterprise fund, and that's really what we're borrowing for, and that's what's gonna be paying back whatever portion isn't covered by other sources.
We should have the funds in sewer capital to cover that, so, yes.
But that's where it's coming from, it's not out of the...
Not from the general taxpayers or anything, not from the general fund, not from...
It's from the rates for the...
Can I move that we move ahead with, uh, 0% borrowing from the Vermont Bond Bank for lift station upgrades?
For one of them.
And can you authorize the town manager to sign?
And authorize the town manager to sign?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Given he's let back into the United States after his behavior in Canada, it's...
They'll discharge him 25%.
Yeah, he's gonna, they're gonna charge us a tariff on it, hopefully, give you back.
Alright, so all in favor of approving the, uh, is it SCARP, what is it?
SCRP.
SCRP, uh, funding with, uh, and having the town manager sign applicable documents, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Casey, for organizing.
While we're on this subject, I would like to just add something that I feel is relevant, just to give you a quick update, is we had a meeting with Guide House and, um, our FEMA rep about the 428 request, which is in regards to the wastewater plant that we've put in, asking to, you know, get something to relocate, rebuild, um, and we, they let us know that, um, sort of it's moving in the next step, that it's now sort of moved on to the next department, and that we should get an offer letter, some, sometime soon.
From FEMA?
Mm-hmm.
For...
For what they're gonna offer us to...
For fixing it.
And, and originally, we weren't gonna hear until July, but we were under the impression that it might be sooner than that, like, maybe six to eight weeks from now, possibly, um, we've, you know, we didn't get an exact date, but it sounds like it's moving along, and we should expect an offer letter at some point in the near future.
And that's no indication on which way that leans?
No.
Well, they're gonna make an offer, what, what type of B, we'll see, right?
Yeah, it, like, they're doing the benefit cost analysis and all of that, so, yeah, it's just move, it's moving along, I guess, a little bit, a little bit quicker than we thought, so that's good, so...
Awesome.
So, that's where that is, just, we had a big ask to me, uh, the end of, or earlier this week, maybe, and that's what they said, so...
That's great, thank you. Next, item four, select board to review and consider selecting an engineering firm for the design and engineering work for the East Main Street Bridge number 31, colloquially known as in Greensboro event, and authorize the town manager to sign a contract with the chosen company. So, engineering costs are, are FEMA-eligible expenses, right?
Yes, and we actually already have the funds for the engineering for this, the A and E funds, they've already sent us for several of the projects, Tuck Brook, Fisher-Foley, East Main Street Bridge. Um, so we have that money in our possession, sitting in unearned revenue, because we haven't spent it yet, but we already have those funds for this project.
So, these two proposals look pretty similar until I got down to the cost for them. And did anybody else feel that way?
Yeah, 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 well, I...
Like a factor of 10?
Yeah.
On the cost?
And I, yeah, I definitely saw that, and I didn't see, I saw a lot of fluff in one that I didn't...
I don't know, reading the narrative, to me, it sounds like it was a pretty similar product, work product.
I voted for 10 bridges. What'd he say?
He votes for 10 bridges, with by 10 bridges.
Yeah. I, I have 100% confidence in the lower...
McDougal Berks group?
Yes, absolutely.
Which is not Summit anymore.
It's not anymore, he sold the Horizon, which is a larger bird than...
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause they jumped, or...
But he's still there, well, not National, bigger than, bigger than, bigger than one, bigger than one office.
Right, and they had a lot more stuff in the house, it looked like all they were contracting out was like Geotech, which was the same as the other bid.
Yeah.
So...
I actually met the new guy, the owner, I coincidentally came in the day that I gave him a reading. So, I don't have, I have confidence in, in their work, in their, in their bid price.
Did you guys discuss this, even, open your...
We didn't get a chance to, no.
I mean...
He thought they weren't really an apples-to-apples, but, I mean, I, I didn't have a chance to look through it thoroughly, I was a little shell-shocked by the difference in the two of them, but, um, and of course, Du Bois offered the construction admin, but they did separate the cost, um, and I'm assuming Horizons could also do that, but, yeah, but...
I thought it was in the Horizon one.
They might have said that they could do it, but I don't think they gave a price on it, we didn't ask for that, I was like, aw. I think it said that they could offer that service, but we didn't ask for a price on construction admin, and I think that...
So, you can take that, I have your voice, the king, they're still way higher, so...
I mean, can anyone make an argument or justification for why the 10, you know, are they providing 10 times that better quality? So, then if, if not, then we should just go ahead with...
I thought the Horizon one was surprising, well, I thought it was surprisingly cheap.
Well, so I feel the project is surprisingly, I'm surprisingly easy.
It's true, it's a small crossing, the bridge that got washed out was 40 feet or something, it's small.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of my, my thought on the whole thing, is I'm much more in line with the Horizon number being too much, there's nothing about the, the Voice the King number is ridiculous, not for that type of...
So, do you wanna make a motion to accept the...
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for Horizon, and I don't know the...
With, then with the town manager?
With the town manager, with the town manager to decide.
What's the amount, Casey?
69.9.
Yeah.
For 69.9?
Which honestly, in my view, is clunky for that project, it's not, I guess, unless there's some hidden complication there.
I'll second.
That I can't see, and somebody's four foot out the brunt.
Can you also authorize the task, the town manager to sign a contract, please?
I would like to.
So, so you made the motion, you made the second, Tim seconded, more discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, good, select board reports?
Just as the board representative to both the Downtown Partnership and the Neck Arts for the Townhouse, I can say that, um, we have received reimbursement for the amounts that were taken from our accounts by the bookkeeper that we hired.
Oh, good.
And have fired.
Right, great.
And those are like collected funds, you, it's like a good check, or, and, yeah.
It didn't bounce?
It, it won't, I don't think so. And, you know, and just because I refuse to say anything to Paul and the press about it, it is also, uh, you know, it was a reputable person. um, it is also, uh, you know, it was a reputable person that we hired originally and worked with for a long time, and something changed and we figured it out and.
Right.
We fired her.
As an employer that has been involved in an embezzlement, it's, things, people's lives change and.
You do have to watch things.
That you know and trust make bad decisions and fortunately, in my opinion, this one was caught relatively quickly.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's not Bill Cludd and Eden just lost, you know, lost sixty thousand dollars, anticipated, they just, a lot of people, yeah. Yeah, I mean, when I was at NASA, we, we lost forty, forty grand, so, and it didn't matter four months.
And both boards, just saying, both boards are all volunteers.
Yes.
And our hope, at least at the townhouse, I mean, we've, we're twenty-two years old as a board, but our expectation was that we needed to have somebody because we were doing this big project and we wanted to have it, um, and, you know, have more administration around it and not a volunteer doing it, but guess what, sometimes volunteer does work better.
Yeah, and to Paul's point at town meeting, this money is appropriated to organizations, it's not the select board, does not control it or spend it or oversee it in any manner.
Right, the vote, the voters appropriated it.
Yes, right.
Right.
So.
So there's no possible way we.
It's inappropriate for him to suggest that, in my opinion, but.
Yeah.
That's his little thing, um, you know, the townhouse had, yeah, it's a small amount compared to what we worked hard to fundraise from small donations. For years, over years, over years, so.
Alright, other reports? New business, old business?
I have one quick new business, sorry, um, I didn't, it doesn't mean, it's just a heads up, so, um, we have the two thousand nineteen Ford Fusion that's in the unmarked car for P D, um, it's scheduled to be replaced after July first. Um, we did just get an estimate of close to six thousand dollars in repairs it needs. The car is barely worth that, um, so the, basically the repairs are almost as much as the car is valued at, so we're probably not gonna fix it, um, I'm waiting to hear back, um, on safety, like, cause we have to make sure, but I just wanna let you know that I'm gonna start looking at options, we may need to purchase it sooner, like the, the next police vehicle sooner, um, because of, especially if it's a safety issue and it can't be driven, so, um, looking at that, and, and so basically we have money in our capital equipment fund for it, it's just that we might, you might see in the next month that we need to come to you to actually purchase the car a little bit sooner than July.
Do you know, do you know what it needs?
Um, it's a, like the rack and pinion for the whole steering system and a complete new exhaust system.
This is the one that's a cheap shot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, so it's old.
It's the two thousand nineteen, it's six years old, and, um, so it was like fifty-five hundred to six thousand for the, to repair it. So, yeah, yeah.
Wait, six thousand dollars for a steering rack and exhaust?
Twenty-two hundred dollars, about twenty-two hundred just for the rack and pinion, and that was like rebuilt, not a new one. And then the labor for that, so it's like, you know, about thirty-five hundred for that and then a complete, whole new exhaust system, not just the muffler, like whole entire thing, so.
The oil and alley for it.
Yeah, I, I did look it up online though, and it gave me a range for that repair.
Everything comes up.
And the range was between twenty-five hundred and thirty-five hundred, so for the rack and pinion piece of it, so it's, I, I did validate that because that was the first thing I said, I was like, that seems really excessive, but I did look it up and I guess it was pretty legitimate, so.
Yeah, so it's all this.
So, and I, I looked up the Kelly food book and like best case, like if the car was in good condition was like seven, so we're not gonna put fifty-five to six thousand dollars into it, doesn't make sense, so. Um, so just as a heads up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into some options and we just may need to purchase it sooner because, yeah.
I mean, could we shop around and see if someone would do it cheaper?
Yeah.
Could, yeah.
Alright, okay, just another question?
No, I think we certainly could. It wouldn't hurt to, there, there are other repair shops right in town, we could just pick one and see if we could get a different number.
Yeah.
For different.
I'll ask, I'll ask about it.
Dan Hale?
Pedestrian Bridge Retained Wall Budget. Where's that at? Construction season is in and in three weeks away.
There's a couple documents that we just got from S E Group in order for us to like, um, it was their opinion that the bids are valid, it was from Engineering Ventures through S E Group saying that the bids are valid. We just need a notice to proceed from USDA, however, they're not gonna give that to us until we know that we're getting that two hundred thousand dollar downtown transportation second grant because in our funding package, we need that. Um, I did recently redo the budget, um, and it's not as bad as I thought because what I didn't realize when I went in and updated it is the figure that was in there for the cost of the bridge was nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, which was the last bid. So once I put the seven seventy-five back in, if we can set two hundred, we're not short.
If we get this next.
If we get that second downtown transportation, which was due on February twenty-seventh, the application was Heather from Carrington did that for us, so once we know that, then we would have our full funding package and then USDA should give us a notice to proceed.
So the intent is to get that started this year?
Up to award it to C C S.
Yes, 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 right.
Yes, yes.
So.
That's what we wanna do.
I know, this is a terrible subject, but I gotta ask the question, so with the possibility of a FEMA buyout on the, is that building? I mean, that, that changes a lot about that street with that building being gone.
Does it?
The look of it?
Still, only the look, not the look, not even the look, but we, all of a sudden we have options of, of access to the river for one thing. Uh, the other thing is parking is always an issue, I mean, having a peace park is nice, but now we're gonna have to park on the hillside of the bridge. I'm just thinking, I don't know, it's gonna be a.
Well, the, um.
I mean, we can work around it.
The fact that that building is on the list for buyout is a placeholder, is my understanding. It's not necessarily the case.
So they're not really, they're, they're, Rose was, Rose was honest about it, yeah, that, I didn't know if anybody had heard of it.
Also, uh, uh, there is some question about the information that we had about how they wouldn't be able to get any grant funding if they were on the.
Guess that's what I was asking, so it's likely this is, it's not gonna be.
It's not, no.
Far from over.
No, it's far.
Somebody's gonna wanna save it.
It's far from over and someone may wanna save it.
Nice.
Okay.
So do we have a, a timeline on when that grant hopeful, hopefully is approved? And then how long it takes the USDA?
Well, as soon as we know it's awarded, then we, I already have the, they have this called this monthly budget report that has to be filled out with your, your budget and then your sources and it has to all balance out, I have that done and ready to go, it's, and then.
Do we know how long that takes for that turnaround usually?
So, yeah. I don't know how long it's gonna be to, to hear on.
So I actually was at C C S today, looking for work, and so, uh, we talked about it very briefly. They're ready to go, they're ready to go, but a lot of, all the prices that they got were like for five days. You know what I'm saying, so you, you don't get, when you get a price from somebody now, like on the files, price is good for five days. It's been five months.
Well, we did put a five percent contingency in there, which is like a hundred green or something, so.
Everyone, everyone that, I talked, Mark, talking to Mark, he says, and, and everyone that we talked to said, you know, we're, we're, that's what we plan on it being, but just so you know that there is.
Well, we did put, we did put a contingency in there.
There is a, there is an issue that we need to get this thing going sooner than later.
Right, well, that's, I'm trying to.
Yeah, right.
I'm just trying to get to the.
Well, I'm slowly leading down the road to where I don't wanna be, and that is that we need to put up some money to get things going.
So we don't have a date when they say that they're gonna give it?
At this point, at this point.
We don't, I could ask Tracy tomorrow, um, or just email her and find out, I know it was due on the twenty-seventh, I don't know when they expected to make awards or decisions on that.
And then you, and then you have the whole thing ready to go, and then they should approve it relatively quick.
USDA should give us a notice to proceed, yes.
Like, you were giving us a hard time for saying let's go ahead.
Well, we don't have a choice, no.
In federal time, yes, but quick might be a week, yeah.
Want me to fight you the whole way or you want me to get this thing moving?
So we're hopefully starting this summer.
I didn't think I, I didn't think I had a choice of not doing it anymore. So I'm gonna do it, see if I can, but that means.
Well, we're definitely, we're doing it this summer, we're all the money.
Well, that's kind of where I'm.
So this is my question, I think this is what you're saying.
Wait, wait, hang on, hang on, hang on, let's, let's talk one person at a time.
So, so we can't let this construction season go, so in my mind, we should come up with a date where if we don't hear back from this grant, we're committing whatever the difference is to make it happen. It doesn't have to be tonight, but like by whatever, April eighteenth, if we don't hear back, we need to have a conversation about, just otherwise this could be too long.
Very likely, the, the grant program has a timeline that we, we should be able to find when they anticipate awarding grants. So let's find that out.
Yeah, I say we talk about that next, next meeting, and, and we wait, and if you could ask Tracy to check if she knows when she anticipates that and then.
Right.
Right, to Eric's point, yes, I did, you know, I thought I wasn't really supportive of this. It's happening now, then it needs to happen now because we can't afford it to go another construction.
And that's what Sherry said.
We'll lose funding, we can't go out anymore.
That's what I'm saying, if we're gonna do it, we're, we're at the point now where we're not arguing about whether we're gonna do it, we need, we need to, we need to do it. Danny lost.
And part of the whole project is to, to redo that wall that at least the engineers say is holding the main street and so. Probably had to repair it.
Yeah, no, no, and one of the interesting things that Mark and I were talking about in our discussion was the fact that these new pilings that we gotta have that are so expensive are, are the newest thing and it's, they're being used everywhere now, and so it's, we kinda settled me down where. Yes, you're right, Danny, it's unnecessary, but yes, that's the way every engineering firm is doing it these days, so that's the way. They're saying that's the way it needs to be done, that's the way it needs to be done, so, gotta be done.
Yeah, okay, so what we're gonna do is next meeting, we're gonna revisit this and we're gonna have, we're gonna.
Maybe we'll know, I mean.
And somebody's gonna, right, or we'll get dates.
The construction cycle, so they, they know.
Yeah, okay, good, and then.
Don't mean they're gonna have.
But the, the general sentiment of the board is that we're gonna need to push this forward somehow, this construction season, okay.
I have a really good, uh, new business que, uh, question. Um, I'm wondering if we have had in the past an official library rep from the board of the town? Just thinking about, uh, does it, I'm thinking about going to a couple of library board meetings personally, cause I gotta been to one. I know some of us, for example, go up to the, you, Laila, or go to the, um, the H E D meetings, but I was just thinking about how important it is to have, uh.
I would love to have, because in the year, at the H E D meeting, you, you were an ex officio or something, right, don't you have this or nothing?
O P is.
Or somebody, yes.
O P's ex officio, and he did come, he's been to a bunch of them too.
No, but somebody is, that that seems available, with the library, knowing, there's no in town oversight.
Right.
And part of why I'm the board rep for those two is because it's part of our bylaws in both of those groups. Um, I wonder if we would have to be.
Same with the rail trails, in the same way, that's why, that's why we have the, the board very natural thing, is the lease spells that out. And it's odd, now that we're, this discussion makes, it's kinda odd to me that, that there's nothing like that for the library.
Yeah, well, there's for every, for every, for every other group there is.
But they're, but they're an independent organization, but they're not closed meetings, I don't think, so.
They're not, they post the agendas.
Well, I would, I would, I would attend just to.
They're not as in, they're not as independent as the light department is, and we gotta see it on that board. The light department is much more.
We also give them quite a bit of money and.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we don't give the light department any money except for light, though.
Right, so.
So maybe we could just attend the meeting and talk about it and then.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Good job, I like that.
You guys could even.
Well, it's, or Tim could go, that's cool.
You guys could, you could, you can discuss amongst yourselves, anything else on your new business, old business, or?
Eric must have some stew or something.
Yeah.
You guys sat.
Oh.
Uh, um, alright, let's adjourn.